We will go ahead and call to order the Wednesday, August twentieth, twenty twenty five. Uh city assault and regular city council meeting, and we'll start with the pledge.
Pledge of allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call. Duncan is absent. Harlier here. Angel is also absent. Kramer here.
Here.
Our civility pledge, we pledge to promote civility by listening, being respectful of others, and acknowledging that we are all striving to support and improve our community. That takes us to perfecting and approving the agenda. Any changes to the agenda?
No changes.
I'm going to perfect and approve the agenda.
What's that doing?
Harlier?
Yes.
Kramer?
Yes.
Whitehead.
Yes.
That takes us to citizens speak. This is time for anybody that would like to speak on non-agenda items tonight. Uh there are a couple signed up, so I'll start with Gene.
Yes, we gene.
Yes.
Oh, I was there on the water issue that I thought there'd be someone coming.
Okay.
To speak about the aquifer.
Yes, they'll, they will be talking on. So once we get the.
I want to make a comment or two about that, because I'm interested in that area quite strong.
All right, I'll check in with you. Uh we get any others to see them? Uh we'll get their own, uh Scott, when we get down to the event, we'll talk to that a little bit. Thanks. Uh next we have the consent agenda. So this would be the approval of the minutes from the July sixteenth regular meeting, the approval of the list of bills, uh treasurer's report transfers, building permits. There are a few that Susie sent out. Uh then we have here in your license approvals for cases that have twelve hundred Market Street, uh Sam's main street market, and signing the post four sixty for the event uh that we'll have Scott talk about. So Scott, well, go ahead. Talk through the event.
So, my name is Scott Sork. I represent the Soul Region. I also represent Iowa Veterans Outdoor Experience. I think I've got a pack of those. I guess first I want to thank the city for the support that you guys have given us. Without that initial support, we don't know that we'd be where we're at right now. With the city crews, with the phone service, and the wait judges and everything else. Thank you so much for that. This has been a huge event for Soler. We're working on getting a helicopter. I got that filed today. There's two possible routes for it to come into. It just depends on the wind. It will either come in basically right over the wall, a land with all diamond, or you'll have to come in over this way and then down with land above all them. So I guess I'm here to answer any questions that you may have.
I appreciate the level of detail on the packet that he submitted between the the walking route, the layout uh for both Main Street and down to the field. I felt like that was very detailed. I didn't have any questions from that. Any questions from?
I know we've talked to businesses on both sides about the street closure for just that part of the debate.
We were just kind of wondering about the time run, because if you wanted us to be involved.
Yeah, and actually, if you've got a contact number for me, um I've got a excuse my pardon. Okay, good.
And I'll add to mayor that um the Public Works Department met with um Mike Kessler yesterday.
Yes.
And so I think from a logistics standpoint of what the city needs to provide for support, both for the escort, um the road closing, and just throughout the event, I feel like we had some good conversations, got some good connections made. There's going to be some signage, message signing that goes out, obviously some road closings. Um so I feel like we've got good open communication and a good plan, a good plan, at least to start the conversation.
That was a good point.
It's a great plan. So uh I think unless Public Works has anything else to add.
Well, sure.
Yeah, I think sorry. I think there obviously there's going to be things that happen on the on the day during the event. But as far as trying to try and to dot all i's and cross the t's, I think we've got a good plan and good open communication with the Legion and the staff.
If you have any questions, go through the reach out. They've been that email and stuff, so I should check out what we're doing.
We're still on hard work from all of you, but we're reaching. We brought from all of state companies. When people like to do a window, but I mean, um in our, we did probably create an envelope and leave it. Um we like to do a window and like some kind of like to get some ideas.
Sure.
And hopefully you might gather um for a lot of different items. Marty, I have a personal, a personal reason.
Absolutely. And our local office is not right away by David's house.
Be beyond me.
All right. With that, uh do we have a motion to consent agenda?
I'm going to through the consent agenda.
Harlier?
Yes.
Kramer?
Yes.
Whitehead.
Yes.
All right. Uh Fire Department uh report event uh last month.
Uh July was the record month with the department. We believe it was seventy-two calls. Uh so over two and a half calls a day. So they're extremely busy, um very active. Again, just appreciate everything that they do. They're uh do still have a couple openings if anybody is interested. They do feel like they are sitting pretty healthy with thirty-one or thirty-two uh members, uh but there are a few open spots with anybody, so whether anybody that's been enjoying it, otherwise that's all I have. The party of the department. Uh Sheriff's Office.
This is to Public Works Director report for payments.
Yeah, so um it's been a month since the council has met and obviously a really active time for Public Works. During that time, um Public Works has done some additional safety training and also orientation of some of our new staff, not only in Public Works, but in all the departments. Uh Spis Street had an unexpected repair that needed to be made that um part of pulled off with great expertise, minimum uh time that the the street was closed. They were able to plan that, notify the folks and the residents. It's still a little bit of a rough patch there, but that will come back and get asphalt uh patched once we're doing some other asphalt repairs. Um also have curb and gutter project planned for the next few weeks. Um needed some quick decisions from the Streets Department. Thanks to Andrew and Jean for providing that. Just kind of have a small window to get finish up a curb and gutter project uh on Iowa Street near the Sheriff Substation here in the next few weeks. So um that'll be coming. And then we've been working on those new loader leases and the equipment associated with that, uh preparing for those new um those two new pieces of equipment. We have a planning meeting with the Legion on the global wall tear that's coming September eighteenth through the twenty-first. A lot of logistics associated with that, but um really exciting opportunity for our community to host those that special event. The staff have been crazy busy doing line painting and preparation for school. So everywhere you look, um and a lot of that has to be done outside of normal hours because of traffic. So we thanks for their flexibility. Um you'll notice that the uh pond at the new city hall site has got some fresh pumps in it. Uh keep the water from getting stagnant. Also, Chris has arranged for um the G O to receive an inspection, which we received a rebate on. So we're grateful for that. Also, fire sprinkles, the fire sprinkle sprinkler system um is also receiving an inspection. So all this is in preparation um before we really get into the remodel. Um also, um this week, um Public Works has rented a lift. They're going to be doing some cleaning on the ground, storage reservoir, tank, and some other projects that kind of need that uh need the lift for that. Also, the council or the um school let us know that they also approved that new meter at the concession stand. So um Chris has been in charge with E and J, working on getting that done. Um I forget, Chris. Was that? Oh, they're true. Okay. And then also, um there was a budget time, new windows for the Timberdome was approved. So those have also been ordered. So super crazy busy, but all good. Also wanted to mention that uh Tom's time with us is going to be ending here next week. We're going to miss him dearly. Thankful that I have him this summer. He really put in some extra time to help us out in his time of need. Um so he's leaving us a little early this this um this year. We wish him well. Thank him for all this work. Um and then also appreciate that Tim Stoll's been able to come back and help pick up with some mowing here as we kind of still have this um crazy wet season where we can't keep up with the mowing. So we're thankful to have him back just to help him pitch. Anything else?
A lot.
It is a lot. It is a lot.
All right, thanks. Uh take some light.
Yes, we wrapped up summer reading and it was an incredible success. Again, um our participation numbers were up and we actually had thirty percent of our population were involved in our summer program. So we're thrilled with that. Hope to continue to see that build. Uh tomorrow is tech talk. Every third Thursday you can come to the library and learn about a technology item. Tomorrow is ask the librarian. You just got a new phone or you have a tablet that you don't know why it doesn't work right. Come and work with Michael and he will help you with that nine-thirty in our meeting room, and that is every third Thursday. Um Friday, we will be open from nine till four P M with our monthly staff and service day. And then we will be closed on Labor Day, which is Monday, the first of September. Our fourth annual Dinos at Dust program was incredibly successful. Once again, we have a special tribute to Jack Newsel, who created all of those amazing dinosaurs. Couldn't have done it without Chris helping with the setup and tear down afterwards. Um it's a great team effort and we love hosting that every year. And then finally, our after-school programs will start up the week of September eighth. So right after the Labor Day weekend, we'll start with that early out activity and the team programs.
All right, excellent. All right, Dave, City Engineering Party?
Earl Ridge, Parks Three A and B, you know, systems complete. We have a walk-through scheduled tomorrow morning. We will do a bunch list with contractor. Um received an updated site plan from Markview Elementary. That's for the parking lot here. Um look over that, then adjust some of the problems we had regarding divisions. So we'll redo those, get those back. We'll see that shortly. Um Candy's asked me to take a look at the new city hall site. Uh we're looking at trying to get on Cedar Street, put in a sidewalk. Uh there's a lot of bushes right up against the edge of the parking lot there and no sidewalks. We're going to try to get that um laid out as well as an entrance down across from um E and J Electric Center off Main Street. So we'll work on getting that put together. Uh on the wastewater plants, uh update on that is the facility plan that is going to be sent to D and R hopefully by the end of this month is the schedule. Uh we did meet with Northland Security, uh like municipal advisor, and started looking at the cost schedule, rates, options for funding and so forth. Um we have a couple of staff that are going to go uh to Webtech at the end of September, forty-nine and three, to Chicago. Uh we'll work in equipment specific to what we're looking to put in at that wastewater plant and be able to talk to vendors. So look at competing equipment, try to get some selections made, get a jump on that. Uh we're going to put together the I N P application and uh get that submitted so we can get started on the environmental review process. Uh as far as the schedule is concerned on that, uh we're a few weeks behind, but if we get started on the survey in September, the geotech will be right back on schedule with it. So Craig's are looking pretty good there. And then uh after we get all that submitted, we'll put together engineering agreements, um particular preliminary layout and go through that with council so we can get started on the design. That's pretty important.
Thanks, Dave. City Attorney, Kevin?
Well, I actually have something that I can break broke my twenty game streak or something like that. Um I just wanted to give everybody a uh just a little report. Obviously, there's been a lot of talk about uh the uh Literate Hotel and some of the issues that are going on there. So I wanted to get everybody, counsel especially, they uh go through the timeline. This has been going on for a long time. So I just want to start back uh get some facts out there about what was going on here. So in May fifteenth of twenty twenty-four, the city council uh denied the application of Parrot Equity Group to have an additional parking variance from their original parking variance to allow for units one oh one and one oh two in the Literate Hotel to be used for uh to host gatherings. Uh as you recall, the occupancy permit on the original units one oh one and one oh two was for retail office uh use and the gatherings did not comply with that uh that uh issued certificate of occupancy. Uh after that time, on June eighth and August tenth, uh there were gathering events held at units one oh one and one oh two in addition to other ones, but the city I did file a misofractions uh based upon the uh use on June eighth of twenty twenty-four and August tenth of twenty twenty-four uh alleging that the owners had violated their certificate of occupancy by holding those events on that on that date. As they continued to hold events in violation of their uh occupancy certificate of occupancy, uh the city uh sort of noticed that they were revoking the entire occupancy permit uh the units one oh one and one oh two in December of twenty twenty-four. Uh the owner did appeal that to the city council as was his right under the building code. And on January eighth of twenty twenty-five, the city council upheld the revocation of uh occupancy permits at uh units one oh one and one oh two. To date, the occupancy permits have not been reinstated on that uh units one oh one and one oh two in that building. Uh so the two infractions we filed that were tried upon stipulated facts, basically both sides just, you know, it was just a legal question for the magistrate to answer. Nobody had, nobody denied the fact that gatherings were held in those units at those two dates. Um before we got the ruling, uh there were six more events held in six more gathering events, units one oh one and one oh two between January and April of twenty twenty-five. Eventually, on June third of twenty twenty-five, the uh judge issued an order that uh per the owner of uh the Literate Hotel did violate their certificate of occupancy on June eighth and August tenth of twenty twenty-four by holding gatherings in that event uh in in conflict with their issued certificate of occupancy on that building. After June third of twenty twenty-five, after the ruling, there were at least two more events held, June seventh and June twenty-first of twenty twenty-five. So the continued uh the continued violation of the ordinance uh going back to May fifteenth of twenty twenty-four and even holding events after the magistrate ruled that the city was correct that they were holding events. They still continued to hold events. So to ensure that the city, the law of city ordinances were followed, uh with consultation with the mayor, I did file a petition for injunctive relief, basically asking the court, and uh this has been filed, asking the court to uh enjoin the owners of that property from holding events, gatherings and and events on units one oh one and one oh two without valid occupancy permit. So that's where we stand today. Uh if anybody has any questions, I just wanted to make sure we, it's been a long process. I wanted to go back over some of the facts that were that have been uh out there that uh uh that led up to this filing. So if anybody has any questions, I'd be anybody in the council has any question, I'd be happy to answer those.
I just want to thank you for being diligent and staying with it. So we'll continue to update the council in the future as the case goes forward. Thanks for recapping all that. Uh next, uh we, item thirteen, Johnson's in fighting Rod Sullivan is Rob on?
He is. Nurse Rod?
Yeah, hi, everybody. Um sorry, I guess I had a little trouble joining, but thanks. Uh few quick things. Uh first of all, uh glad to see that you have Judith Thomas on tonight. I think you'll enjoy that presentation and uh once you've heard it, we'll all have to decide uh uh if we're going to do anything about this information, where we go from here. So thanks again for having her uh on your agenda. Um I know that uh you folks are looking forward to a fringe area agreement meeting with us. I know that I've been asked to serve on that committee. I don't think we have the other person yet, but as soon as we do, we'll start talking about uh when we can get together and when we can clean that up. Um if you have driven it, you know that we got done with adding the rumble strips, both east and west of Highway one on a hundred and fortieth street and also a hundred and fortieth street uh just as you get to Ely Road. And uh so big thanks to uh the folks from the Solon area who who um you know, made that a priority for us and of course to Soul and Fire, who who put their two cents in on that uh several times. And uh the only other thing I have is um the board is uh working on a letter. I believe we're going to get it sent tomorrow to the city of Iowa City to uh ask them to join us in creating a joint law enforcement entity. This would be uh a kind of an overseeing group uh consisting of uh one supervisor, one city council member, and one person from the public who would um help us to move forward with a joint facility. So uh as you know, Johnson County's been looking at a new jail and sheriff's office. This facility would be that plus a new Iowa City Police Department. So uh hopefully that'll all come together. Um and I'm open for any questions anybody has.
Rod, thanks for helping push to get those rumble strips uh installed. It definitely makes a difference just driving that every day to and from work. Um with it, hopefully we see uh no more fatalities out off of that road with that. But appreciate your support and helping get that done for us.
Definitely. Thank you. Anything else from anybody? Thank you all.
No, thanks for being.
Okay.
Thanks, Rod.
Thanks, Rods.
Wow.
All right, that takes us to new business. So this is item fourteen, presentation uh of the Johnson County Solarian uh model. That, yeah, that anything, any lead in before we hand it over to the.
Um so Judith Thomas is here. Uh Judith, were you going to share a presentation?
Yes.
Okay, I'll get you ready for that. You should be okay to go. Thank you for being here. Can you hear us okay?
Uh yes. Okay, so now I'm hoping you're seeing my presentation.
Yes, we are.
Wonderful. All right. Thanks for having me here and um this is the same presentation that I I gave to the Johnson County Board of Supervisors. So sorry, uh Rod, it won't be anything new and exciting beyond what I already presented. Um uh but uh the presentation is an overview of a USGS report that we prepared, uh simulation of groundwater flow in the Solarian Aquifer for Eastern Iowa for the period of twenty twenty to twenty forty-five. Um as I said, my name's Jude Thomas. I'm presenting. I represent the U S Geological Survey, the Central Midwest Water Science Center. The au- the authors of the report and um the construction or the person that constructed the model is John Michael Gannon um and Amelia Bristow. And John Gannon was uh contractor hydrogeologist for the USGS while working on this. And then Amelia is a hydrologist with the U S Geological Survey um Central Midwest Water Science Center. Oh, hang on here. All right, I just advanced my slide. That looked good.
Yes.
Wonderful. All right, just making sure things are working. So I will be talking about, you know, why did we build this model? Um and why did we predict over the period that we did? So the purpose and scope of this effort? The uh review some of the advantages of using the numerical model and talk about what the conceptual model was that we were trying to um recreate in in a numerical environment. So what geology we were looking at? And talk about two types of models that we created, the steady state model and the transient model. And I'll I'll talk about the definitions of that, but um it's part of the the process of doing a groundwater flow model. After you build a groundwater flow model, you then test it. And so we did a uh a couple different evaluations, but I will talk largely about our water balance evaluation, but there's a couple other uh comparisons that we made. And then once we think the model's running uh well, we look at being able to do predictions with it. And so I'll have some information about future drawdowns and and predictive results that we learned from um running the model and talk about the assumptions that went into that. And I included this nice visual from the two thousand and six report uh which was a model of the same aquifer, basically Solarian Devonian aquifer system that we have done some updating to as well as, you know, go doing future predictions beyond that, because this model uh from two thousand and six uh was um run out to twenty twenty-five. So it was, it was time. And we're looking at a picture of some of the dissolution features that we see at the surface near the Coral Well Dam and just the significance of the role of that where where that type of um solution feature occurs, it changes how water moves, but that's not true of the entire aquifer. So just kind of a a discussion of the complexity of the system is sort of what I I take away from that picture. So the purpose and scope, we wanted to describe the conceptual and numerical groundwater flow model. So that's the purpose of the report is to describe those things and why we did it of the Slurin Aquifer. It talks about how we constructed and calibrated a steady state and transient numerical model, so documentation. Um then we did our what, we also talk about model performance and then we talk about uh forecasting the effects uh of estimated future water use and talk about all the assumptions that went into, you know, what are what are our forecasts based on? What percent growth rate, what climatic conditions? So we have descriptions of that. Um the model is a tool. It's useful in helping you to assess the uh resource that you have, the Solarian Aquifer that you're using for drinking water supply. So it helps in decision-making and planning for your long-term water supply. Um yeah, I think that's what I wanted to say there. So the advantages of the numerical model. We have seen continued population growth. Um and that's increased over the model area by twenty-five percent since the two thousand and six model was published by the U S Geological Survey. So that's a factor that we can incorporate into a numerical groundwater model. Uh in the sense that we can reflect that growth through um in in increased water use. And and then if we project increased water use, then once we have a a calibrated model, then we can predict what's going to happen um in the aquifer, what kind of uh uh behavior are we going to see? We also um can use a numerical model to help us to understand the effects of droughts and distress on the area's water supply. Um model predictions, they help us to look out into the future. So we can run it twenty years out into the future and project uh what increases in use and variable climate will mean to groundwater levels in the Solarian Aquifer. Groundwater models allow for water inputs and outputs to be quantified and scenarios to be run. So it gives us a tool for for understanding the system. So because and and going back just one there, the numerical model advantage, again, this was the the approach used in two thousand and six. So it's a tool familiar to Johnson County. And so uh you know, the continued use of such a tool gives you some continuity as well. It's it's the sort of the way to to look at it. So that's that's another advantage here. For our conceptual model, uh we're looking at uh in the center of this map here, uh we see Johnson County at the center of the map. Um you can see Cedar Rapids in Lynn County to the north. Uh it stretches out um into Cedar and Muscatine Counties to the east and Iowa County to the west and and some of Washington County to the southwest. So the uh model area is based on hydrologic and topographic features. It's forty-one uh forty-one hundred square miles. I'm sorry, square kilometers. Uh and we used different um features to delineate the boundaries of the model. So the boundary to the northeast side, we have the Cedar River as a um a boundary uh for the model. Uh to the northwest, we used the city of Cedar Rapids. We have a stream gauge um at Palo. So that gave us a uh a a known quantification of water, surface water flowing in. So that gave us a a boundary condition at that location. And to the southeast, we have a boundary at the uh USGS gauge at Columbus Junction. So we use those surface water gauges to help us bound the model to the uh north and the south, basically. And then the the western southwestern boundary over here is at a topographic high and located reasonably far away from the uh what turns out to be the areas of highest use in the Solarian Aquifer, which are centered um here in uh Johnson County. All right. Going on with the conceptual. Going on with the conceptual model. The uh hydrogeologic surfaces that we represented in the model. Uh, the conceptual model includes the following surfaces, we have. The ground surface, which is derived from LiDAR, then we. Define the top of the Devonian, um which is one of the limestone uh. Aquifers and slash Aqua um restricting units. And that was defined from geologic points that uh were available through the Iowa. Geological Survey's GeoSAMS database. We then define the top of the Kenwood Shale, uh we use a thickness, um an arbitrary thickness of ten feet there to. Show the uh the presence of the shale, uh because it will act to restrict the flow of water. Then we defined the top of the Solarian, again, using that those GeoSAMS points. And then we did the the top of the Makoka to shale, which represents the base of the model where we aren't expecting water to be flowing. Through the Makoka to shale. Uh, so it it's it's kind of the the bottom of the bowl is sort of what I would call it, about bottom of the bathtub. And we gave that a arbitrary thickness of fifty meters. So we use these ideas um. And these surfaces to then implement them in a numerical groundwater model. We'll go on to some other things that we defined. More parts of our conceptual model is we needed to assign uh how water was going to move through these layers that we have selected. And so we use um the parameters uh. That define water movement, uh hydraulic conductivity, which is the ease with which water moves through. Uh, the geologic material and that's uh defined in a length per time. There's a storativity, which is the capacity of the aquifer to store and release water. And then um and that happens to be uni- unitless and then transmissivity, so that's the capacity of the aquifer to transmit water. Uh, it sounds similar to the hydraulic conductivity, but this is in an area per time, so. Uh, all of these parameters we derive from uh actual pump tests. Available uh through, again, um the uh. Not through GeoSAMS, but uh through um the water a water use database. Um, with the uh Iowa Geological Survey. And also by getting contacting the communities and getting pumped as data directly from them, so really tried to uh scrape as much. Information out of that, and so we were able to get uh. Uh twenty-seven aquifer pump tests within the model boundaries and twenty-two of which existed within Johnson County. Um. This is a figure, uh I haven't talked about the figure that's taken up the whole thing, it's showing a specific storage, and so specific storage. Uh, we distributed across the model by uh. Taking information from the pump tests, the aquifer thickness, so that we could show the spatial variability of specific storage. And that's been related to that storativity variable that I was talking about, so we're talking about how water can move through the aquifer, we're defining the rules. Um. Moving on with the aquifer parameters, we used in addition to deriving that point data, we took that point data and then we used. Kriegering to interpolate the hydraulic conductivity distribution. Um, because it was not uniform across the area, there are differences, so we see we have uh hydraulic conductivity. Uh values ranging from point six one meters per day to three point zero five meters to per day, so waters moving at different rates. Um, through the uh aquifer. And this is how we created a uh a representative uh. Distribution of that information. We also, as a an initial entry to the the groundwater flow model, we created. A elevation groundwater elevation map based on uh. Head uh or I'm sorry, based on groundwater levels um from a variety of sources. Uh, we had groundwater levels from the USGS sites, we had groundwater levels from public wells. Uh, from GeoSAMS again, and so uh this combination and also the Iowa Geological Survey has a uh uh some groundwater level data as well, so we brought all those data sets together to try and. Have the most uh robust or or a broad spatial distribution. And this is what we reuse to estimate heads uh for input into the steady state model, so we have to kind of tell the model where to start. And then we can simulate from there, so. Alright, still talking about the conceptual model. Uh. My red lines uh did not come through on this, but I have some other uh. Aspects that needed to be defined, so river boundaries were uh an important. Uh, input to the model, so we needed to create those river boundaries and we used USGS uh stream gauges. And some regression analysis to help us define those river boundaries, so we're just didn't talking about how water's going to move through the model. We also have a thing called a constant head boundary and um that boundary was defined here along the southwest side. And a constant head boundary was here in this little northeast corner here, uh where uh we're representing some of the. Area that drains into the Cedar River and those were based on the potentiometric map. And then we also have some general head boundaries that are based on lake elevations like the Coralville Reservoir and uh. And also um the quarry sump elevation, so we have representation of the Conklin Quarry and the uh Klein Quarry in here. So just generally trying to define how, again, how waters can move through. We adapted, uh this is a a figure showing how recharge was distributed across the model area with the model grid. Overlaying on on top of it. And um so the recharge was adapted from previously published values and adjusted based on the geology. And uh also uh adjusted matching model output to observed water level heads, so we have recharge varying from point two-three centimeters per year to eleven centimeters per year, so. Um, some variability in that and the model grid was refined um in some of the areas of the model. Uh where there's higher use so that we could get a better resolution in those higher use areas. Around the the areas where there is gra- uh groundwater pumping. Alright. So now I'll go through the steps in modeling, so we take our conceptual model that I've just described and all the. The the parts that we, what we use to inform the parts and we put that into a program called Mod Flow. And that creates the numerical model. And again, all these inputs define how water moves in and out of the model. The model is first run as a steady state, so we're just, we're trying to simulate. A a a groundwater level surface and see that all of our geology is working with each other. And all our layers are transmitting water as we expect, the rivers are working with everything, the recharge is working, so. Um, in the case of steady state, we make the assumption that inflow to the model is equal to outflow. There's no time dependent variables um and no changes in aquifer storage. And then there are no changes in the direction and velocity of water movement, so we're we're trying to simplify it so that we can get the model. Get all the kinks worked out of the model, then, once we get a steady state model that we are satisfied with. We move into what's called a transient model and in a transient model, we are allowed to vary things over time. So we can vary water inflows and outflows in response to changes in climate or water use patterns. Those changes result in increases or decreases in aquifer storage and those changes also. Uh, result in changes in direction and velocity of groundwater flow, so. We're increasing the complexity of what we're doing when we move from a steady state model to the transient model where we're. Maybe better simulating reality, but also able to predict into the future. Missed anything there? Um. The steady state model. Uh, we used a parameter estimation uh technique that allowed us to vary hydraulic conductivity to help us. To match our observation points. We used pilot points, which are these dots here that allow us to um vary the hydraulic conductivity uh in these pilot point. In these pilot points uh at each of the pilot points so that uh we can better, again, simulate real groundwater levels. So these are all techniques in in trying to optimize the performance of the model. Um. And that's kind of. What that uh activity was. And so the result here, after we've put in the information and we've optimized the model. Is we see that we have a plot here of observed groundwater level elevation. Uh plotted against the simulated groundwater level elevation and this is one of our initial measures of how good we did. At creating the groundwater flow model and so elevations are from observation wells, so they're static groundwater levels. Or we consider them generally static. Um, overall, you see generally, we have a good fit, we have a slight under prediction at the high end and an over prediction at the low end, so I've just circled those area there, but but overall. Uh, the steady state model's looking good. So now we're able to move into making things more complex, closer to reality, and this is what we do with tran- the transient model. So the transient model includes time series pumping and groundwater level data from the cities of Coralville, Iowa City, North Liberty, Solon and Tiffin. Uh. There wasn't a lot of groundwater level data available geographically across the area. So we really did uh. Really appreciate having this type of information available uh from from the cities. The way that uh the data sets existed, um some but some uh entities were. Keeping uh their data in daily time steps while others were doing in monthly time steps or yearly time steps. Uh, so we needed to. Uniform, create a uniform time step from that, so we couldn't go to the fully detailed. And we couldn't go to maybe to an annual because we might lose some resolution, so we we determined that we'd go on a three-month time step. Um, and make all the data sets basically uh behave the same way in or or have the same time step. So um now we can look at how the the model performed, the transient model performed. And we have um here the. Simulated groundwater elevation plotted with the observed groundwater elevation for El Mauro Depot, which is located. Uh, here uh in the uh eastern portion of Johnson County. Eli North uh up here in the uh southern portion of Lynn County. Uh, Eli Northwest. Closer and uh Stockpile and then uh Lincoln Church, so these were uh where we had uh. Continuous uh groundwater level data and we did simulations, these are farther away from the pumping centers. And we see from the hydrographs that, you know, we generally overpredict water level, but are within a few meters of the observed. Um, water levels. So from there, we then move a little bit closer to where the. Um, action is in the cities of Solon, Coralville and Iowa City. And uh we see some. And and again, same plot where we see uh blue, the blue line is the simulated, the orange line is the observed elevation. And uh we see some over and under prediction of the water level. But we were encouraged to see that, you know, the frequency of water level and pumping data affects the model's ability to capture that variation over time. So Iowa City's uh water levels were um. You know, we were encouraged to see, we saw a lot of the same inflections in the transient model. So. Yeah, I think that's what I wanted to say there. The uh. We then use the transient model to create a potentiometric surface uh for the, well. The simulated period from October through December of twenty twenty-two and um. You know, it generally confirms the same cones of depression that we saw in the uh potentiometric map. Uh, that was an input to the steady state model and um. Yeah, we, you know, the the behavior is what we were expecting, so that that's very encouraging um. So now we're ready to um. Evaluate in a different way that period from uh twenty twenty to uh twenty twenty-two. And this is a figure showing us the water balance. And so for the entire model area, we can define how uh water enters. And those are the positive values on this uh plot on the Y axis. The X axis is time, so our simulated period and then negative values are how water's leaving the model, so. Uh. The green at the very top here, we see recharge from precipitation provides much of the inflow into the aquifer. Uh. And then for water leaving the aquifer, we see that wells, voids and drains, um this is that. The 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 dissolution features uh in in the Devonian, uh those uh represent outflow from the model. The aquifer is providing more base flow to the rivers in this prediction period, so you can see. We have um in the top, this is how the blue is water coming into the model from rivers and then the light blue in the bottom here is water. Um, leaving the model through rivers and generally over the period of prediction, we see that the the that the base fluid of the rivers. Uh, the aquifer's providing more base flow to the rivers and this model prediction period is uh dry condition, so. Um, that intuitively made sense to us. And we also see over the prediction period um. That we have a factor in this water balance of storage uh in the aquifer, so we have. This beige color here is storage into the aquifer. And then this orange color is storage out of the aquifer and we generally see that storage uh. Overall is decreasing over the prediction period, so both in and out of the the model. Okay, check. Pick, okay. Alright, so now we're ready to move into predicting into the future. And so this uh map shows the uh. Prediction period from twenty twenty-two to twenty forty-five and the assumptions that we made uh were to. Do annual increases in pumping rates between zero and five percent based on information from the cities. And we also made an assumption of a moderate decrease in precipitation um across the. Uh, across the model area uh shown by periodic drought, so. For the period of twenty twenty-two to twenty forty-five, we see that in areas where. There's not a lot of pumping and also not in general, a lot of information, we don't see drawdown in the Solarian, so like in this northernmost area. Folks aren't using the Solarian in that area as much where. Uh, communities are using um the Solarian, we see drawdown um. On the range of four to thirteen ma- meters, so we're in the um Iowa City area. And that's between thirteen and forty-three feet. And similarly, in the Solon area, we see a a similar level of drawdown. Uh, and you can see it's sort of a bullseye where it's drawing down. Um, uh, in the the groundwater level is drawing down by thirteen and to forty-three feet, so. Why would that matter? And it would matter in the scenario where. Your your well is drilled to a certain depth, your pump is set at a certain depth, and so if drawdown. Were to cause the water level to bring the pump out of water, not bring it out of water, but the the water level would fall below where the pump is, then. You would not be able to deliver water. So we wanted to investigate that a little bit more, um and so we used a uh. Tool called zone budgeting where we created some zones uh in these. tool called zone budgeting, where we created some zones uh in these higher use areas. So the red here represents sort of Iowa City metro area. We had zone two. Zone three is the southern Coralville reservoir area, the green. And zone four is the northern Coralville reservoir area, including the city of Solon. And then zone five is Fairfax and Southern Cedar Rapids industrial area. And then zone one is the rest of the model area. So it's broken up into those and I will and move to how we evaluated that. So again, we go back to our water budgets where we look at how water is entering and exiting. But in this case, it's entering and exiting the each of the zones. And so that gives us an idea of what are the the significant factors in each of these zones. So for zone two, which um, so so one first thing to understand, it's zones themselves, like zone two won't add up to a hundred percent because it exists within the larger model, the larger model will be balanced. So um, zone two represents the Iowa City area. And uh we see that the primary components of the water budget uh in that area are rivers. So that's the blue here. And then that's how water is entering and water is exiting through drains. Um, and that overall, we see aquifer storage is relatively small and uh not not a significant component. And we also see that this pink down here is water to the well, so that's water withdrawal. And uh as as we said, we were going to increase the uh amount of pumping over the period. And so we see that in our water budget that it's generally increasing. Um. For zone three, this is the rural areas to the south of the Coralville reservoir. Uh, we have water uh entering the aquifer from the river, from lakes, from recharge. And so in general, that area is a source of water to the salarian aquifer uh where those rivers and lakes make up a major component of the water budget. Again, we see, you know, we did the general increasing on pumping. The other observation would be that uh again, the the storage is um decreasing uh over the prediction period. And we see that water going into storage becomes um, doesn't appear to be a significant factor at all. And water coming from storage um is decreasing as well. So we'll be talking about that a little bit more. The uh zone four represents the rural areas to the north and east of the Coralville reservoir. So that's zone four and then zone five represents the Fairfax. And here uh we see rivers. Um. Well, in zone four, we see recharge and uh lakes are important factors. Water coming out of storage are important factors uh in the the overall water budget. And that water leaving the model is uh that the the pumping is a significant factor. Another thing I should have made the observation of is these uh Y axes of rates of water moving are different for each of the zones. So it's something it can be, it can visually look a little, you know, like, oh no. But we do have to really consider like zone two, not to jump back, but you know, we're in sixty thousands and ten thousands. And then when we get to uh zone four, you know, we're order of magnitude less, so six thousand and and uh for zone five, um that one's ten thousand. So um just something to keep in mind is that the differences in the um the amounts of water moving. Um. And we see that rivers, quarries and drains are really not major components in this and that the the players here are recharge. Um, and pumping and that uh that that the lakes are an important factor. And then the uh storage overall again is um decreasing over much of the the predicted period. So um, let's see. How many more? Ah, conclusions, great. Um, so uh what we concluded uh in general is that we saw these simulated drawdowns in the model in these higher use areas uh for that prediction period from 2022 to 2045. So that's something to be aware of. Um, the model in general was indicating that storage into and out of the aquifer was decreasing over the simulated period from 2020 to whoops typo um to 2045. Uh. And we one of the um the things that, you know, we can't go back in time and change this, but having the groundwater level data from the cities made it possible for us to to do any comparison to reality. But that the um the limited availability of that uh groundwater level monitoring is uh one of the challenges in trying to do groundwater flow modeling. So um just wanted to offer that as one of our observations. Uh. Yeah, so um I think that's what I wanted to present and I'm happy to take any questions.
Thank you, Judith. Um, let's leave, let's keep the presentation up for now for a few minutes, just in case someone wants to refer back to a page.
Okay.
Laura, do you have any questions?
Well, I guess, I guess my question is, so it looks like Solon is its own kind of unique zone, right? In each, in the the drawdown that we across the this area is variable. So are we specifically in our little zone drawing down faster than other areas?
Uh, you can see from the rate in general, there are similarities.
Okay.
Um, where 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 the salarian is being used, that we see these cones of depression in over this prediction period. So in particularly uh similar to anyone using the uh salarian aquifer.
All right, thank you.
Mm-hmm.
I don't think I have any questions right now, just trying to take it all in, Dave, do you have?
Yeah, I'll ask a question. And uh, Judith, thanks for the presentation. Um, with respect to the transmissivity in that zone four, would it be better, in your opinion, if we were to spread out the wells and not pull so hard off of each individual well? Let's say we could run it fewer hours per day and not have such a drawdown. Would that be a a better strategy than trying to do all of the work with fewer wells?
Um, I think that there can be strategies like that to be had. Uh, a- and did I do say an evaluation of that? No, but it makes sense if if we look um when we move them away from each other uh and don't have a concentration of wells, then uh the possibility is to to not have so strong a drawdown in in a single geographic footprint, a small geographic footprint. So intuitively that makes sense. Also, operationally, uh, as you said, like turning on one pump and and turning on, you know, like varying those and looking at how the uh groundwater elevation is responding. It could respond quickly and return to pre-pumping values.
Another question I had, if you go to that last slide.
Yep.
That's the the summary of the overall area.
Yeah, it's just, yeah.
Water levels.
Yeah.
Uh, the the wells are at the very bottom of that. It's a very small porch. Does that have a certain percentage of increase per year on the well usage reflected in that?
Yeah, so this one is for the uh period of 2020 to 2022. I apologize. Um, so uh this is showing reality in this case. Uh, we just use the values that were provided. Does that make sense? Um, and then these uh zones here that I was showing are showing that planned um uh increases of zero to five percent over the prediction period based on conversations with the cities, which Mike Gannon had. He reached out to, you you know, the cities and, you know, just kind of get a general idea. I mean, it can be whatever you want it to be, and it doesn't have to be the truth or or what, you know, it but it gives you an idea, generally speaking. If you increase it to two and a half percent, you know, every year, what this is the kind of behavior you're gonna see in the uh in the aquifer, in the groundwater elevations.
There's also uh mention in the study that says that every so often, they did a twenty-five percent increase in the usage and a twenty-five percent decrease in the um recharge to reflect drought conditions. And that was uh done every so many years. Is that shown in this prediction?
I wouldn't say twenty, not twenty-five percent. Um, let's see. But we did so part of the um, let's see. I was trying to see where that those were discussed. Hmm. I discussed it somewhere. Oh, yeah, it is on that one. So we made some assumptions of uh moderate decreases in precipitation to show periodic drought. The percentages I didn't list here. Um, and then the in- increases uh in pumping, we assumed, you know, a sustained increase in pumping. But, you know, based it on conversations in each of the locations, based on the conversations with the city, just to kind of give some variability.
Now, in the uh draft report that was put together, that the summary was based off, that there was some mention about that. That was how they simulated it. So I was just wanting to make sure that some of the variation that you see in there could be reflective of the uh drought that occurs every so many years.
Yeah, 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 that's the idea, yeah. Yeah. Not not assuming the same climatic conditions throughout the entire prediction period, for sure. Not for sure knowing what those will be, but you know, looking at the past to help guide us in making some of those um assumptions.
Thinking of Dave's question as far as having the wells or your pumps in a smaller area versus spread out. If they were to be spread out, like what distance are we talking about as far as having an impact or to city blocks? Is it miles? Who? Where would there be potentially be a beneficial like distance to have them be apart if they were to spread apart?
I I wouldn't necessarily say that I have a number in mind for that. Um. I think um. Yeah, I I I I don't have an answer directly for that as to what that spacing should look like or could look like. I think we could use the model to evaluate that by placing um artificial wells, like fake wells, you know, basically, and looking at, you know, some kind of a sensitivity analysis on that. But overall, conceptually, it makes sense that not having them located. Um. But yeah, I see, I see what you're saying. You're like, well, what's meaningful as far as distance from each other? So, yeah, I I think that would be something that we we could use the model to evaluate as far as spacing.
We and we have been doing that already. This model is built off of a larger model that was done by Mike Gannon or John Michael.
Exactly.
A number of years ago. And
Yep.
We we did follow him when we did the well down by the record nature center. And we've done that for others in Johnson County and Tiffin and, you know, throughout the area. Uh, we use him quite a bit in that five eighths of a mile in this area due to the transmissivity. If you're trying to get through them a gallon per minute, is roughly what they recommend. Uh, we could look at it and try to predict based off of the 2045, if we should increase that spacing so that we don't have as much drawdown. But uh he's available as a as as an independent consultant to work with us
Okay.
to do that. We would we would definitely take that step going forward, knowing uh what's been presented in this.
Yeah.
I I just, you, before you started, you talked about the quarry. What what effect does the quarry, the quarry operations have on the aquifer levels? And what would happen if one of them, you know, is an older one? Wouldn't have to, the older one would re, for lack of a better term, retire and not be used? Or do you have any information on that?
Um, I because we represented the quarries as drains um in the model. Um, it would make me think that uh that not having those operating as moving water out of the model area, that you conceptually, that would be less of a uh a uh, yeah, I I mean, it's it's moving water out of miles. So that it's a where it's going, that would be interesting as to know. But um if we stop taking the water out of the aquifer, that seems like that would be good.
I'm just, I'm not saying there's any information that it's gonna happen. I was just, I just get the quarries that had that.
No, and I'm just just speaking conceptually, yeah. It it makes sense to me that not withdrawing water from the aquifer would be help the aquifer sustain its uh water level. It's not a an infinite resource, that's for sure.
And just going back to that um that water balance, that you look at that budget um in that two-year period. The wells are very small from only that. Um, that's that's the only part that we have anything to hold over to s- to speak of. We can look at trying to get water from a different source and we can reduce that. But there are much larger impacts on the water budget than wells. Um, the drought conditions, the recharge, uh those things are are much more influential on that water budget. And anything shown with those wells, because we're such a small component. Um, at what point do you think that uh the well usage is large enough that it starts to have a major influence on the water budget?
Um. Well, maybe instead of looking at it that way, um looking at the predicted drawdown, I think would be the um, and it's not that the uh it it just becomes uh what? Functional as far as if we draw down and the pump comes out of water, then we have to lower the pump or drill a deeper hole or things like that. Um. Right? But as far as in the overall water budget, you know, you're, these are little straws that you're putting into the ground and trying to obtain water. And that you're limited by how quickly the water can get to your well and what your what your need is. So uh as far as impacting the overall water budget, um, I I don't know that I would have a number there. I would just we just included that as a factor because there's, as you said, there's there's larger things um controlling the overall budget uh of water in the salarian aquifer.
The reason for asking is that DNR about fifteen to twenty years ago looked at this at our request because they were pushing cities off of the Jordan aquifer, the Cambrian or the Mission Aquifer uh because of drawdown in that. And we asked the question, if you do that, do you stress the salarian aquifer? And uh at that time, that was right when they did this, this previous study, when when John put that together in response to that. Uh, I'm I'm curious if there should be any look at balancing the use between those two aquifers to reduce the stress of the salarian, where there is the possibility to put a Jordan in and not not restrict it so much. Uh, otherwise, this there are communities that don't have any other sources available. They would have to run a pretty long line to a community. Or you're looking at surface water, which is a much more complex treatment process and much more expensive. So in other words, cost prohibitive. But uh, you know, that that's something that I wanted to look at with DNR in this study is to take this back to them and say the uh the perception that the salarian was uh not going to be stressed anytime in the near future may be slightly overestimated. And yeah, the we're starting to see some implications that we we could have to revisit whether we can lower the Jordan a little bit more than what we're doing currently to balance the uses between the two.
I don't really have any.
Yeah, that's that's probably a lot for you to process, but uh.
Don't have a lot of insight on that, I would say.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, yeah.
Any other questions that we have? Jean, I know you had signed up about potential happens.
Yeah, I'm just had a couple minutes.
Okay, no, we all we can keep it three minutes.
Three minutes, okay, longer than three minutes. Yeah, it's interesting. I'm really happy that you folks are looking at this. I mean, it's wonderful that you're doing it. Most of the state's asleep. With this issue, my opinion. And there's no state regulations as to water. It's just there. Go get it, do whatever you want, kind of thing. It's the most important thing that we have to our economy and to life. The water is the deal. So it's great to just spend some time with her. Look, and I I think the county is doing a wonderful job. The uh, I'm going up to Clayton County on Friday. The D N R is going to be there because there's a large quarry up there. That wants to double the use of their water. And the cities in the area have written letters to the state about that. And how fearful they are of their water supply like that. So. The state needs to be involved in this. If, from what I heard here, and I'm, if I heard it correct. The thing draws down by many feet, but it goes up by a few centimeters now. I mean, that's, that's not a good deal. And Cedar Rapids is putting in a data center. You probably read about some of the issues that they had with some wells that weren't necessarily deep water wells that there we do the. The data centers are going to take a lot of water and a lot of energy. I read this morning that Wyoming's got a data center coming in that's going to take more electricity, high-power electricity than the state now uses. So we've got stuff coming down in the next few years. It's gonna be like things we've never experienced. And so to try to get ready for this and get ahead of it is good. Because we're not the only one in the aquifers here. Like you said, it's like a big bathtub. And a lot of people putting their straws in the bathtub. So I, I'd be happy to meet with anybody on this anytime. I've studied it quite a bit. I have quite a few ideas, not there as in depth as that. But conceptually, I think some of my ideas are pretty good, and I think. We've got to get the the large concept first before we try to dive into all the details and have to have some agreement on that. So. Thank you very much for doing this. And thank you for having me in. And again, I'd be happy to meet with a smaller group of different citizens that want to explore it further because I think it's the biggest issue we face. As a state. We want to attract people to come here. Des Moines can't even get the water to the people they got right now. They have one of the most expensive and elaborate systems in the world. And they have to limit what people have because they can't keep up with it. This is a huge issue, a huge issue. If you looked at the paper last weekend, Cedar Rapids Gazette. A third of the paper was devoted to water issues. And somehow we just, we kind of live in a rural dreamland about it. And we've grown up not having to think about it. The times are changing. Thank you.
Other questions?
I want to thank the council and the county. For paying for and supporting, we won't agree on a lot of issues. But the county and and the Stolen Council. Putting money on this, stood up for it when not everyone else did, and saw it through, and thank you. Um, for the presentation tonight and for the comments that were just made. And I think it's the beginning, where we're looking at our water from a different side of the room, and that's a success. So thank you very much.
And that, uh, Jude, thank you so much for joining us uh this evening and taking us through that. Uh, as far as the the copy of the presentation, can we have that on the website?
On the website, yeah, but we haven't. We can get it on the website.
All right, and just kind of on that note too, uh, uh, F A Qs were loaded up on the website. You may as well work just some of the, oh, mystery the water.
Thank you, Judith. You can stop sharing now. I think we're done with the presentation.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate your time and and glad to be of service.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, takes us to item fifteen, water tower maintenance problem. Kami?
Yes, so um, I want to welcome Rod.
John Quest.
John Quest. Yes, just want to make sure I'm saying it right. Um, I met Rod earlier this year and. He had been working with Scott Puppy, our previous um bubble burst director on a water tower maintenance program. Scott had done some research with some various uh companies on water tower repair. Obviously, our water tower, it means a good cleaning. However, in the process of these inspections, we learned that it not only needs a cleaning, the base coat has uh is gone. So it's not just a clean, a cleaning isn't gonna do what we need it to do. It needs that base coat. Uh, water towers, as I've learned over my years in this work, need painted on the inside and the outside periodically. And so appreciate Rob being here. He. Had worked with. Again, had worked with um Scott for some time, and so by the time I kind of got involved. I it was just getting me up to speed. And then. Of course, Dave Richards. Our new um hub work superintendent to the look of the program. Liked what he saw. Dave Schepinger took a look at what was being proposed by Viking. Um, and like what he saw, I obviously like the idea of having a plan that's not just a one-year save-up multiple by multiple years. Till it gets bad, fix it. I like this maintenance idea and really. Feel that this could be a good, a good, a good step for the city to end for this water tower maintenance program and plan. And so. Um, so what you're gonna um see tonight as a presentation. Viking is um has a good reputation in the industry. Um, Viking Industrial. Painting. Is is, you know, a company that's been our on our radar for a long time. They have a great reputation. Once we get through the presentation, um, we can talk a little bit about the the financing aspect and in the cost and and how the city would accomplish. Would accomplish paying for a program like this. And so I'm gonna get the presentation up and let Rob take it away.
And then you want me to just tell you when we switch slides?
Yeah, that'd work.
Well, like Danny said, I'm Rob. I'm with uh Viking Industrial Painting. Uh, we are based out of Omaha, Nebraska. Um, we operate now in almost every state in the country. Uh, me personally, I take care of just the state of Iowa, and I live in Cedar Rapids or Fort Paylon, so I'm quite close to you guys. So it's easy for me to get down here. Originally. Talking with Scott, I think we started talking back in twenty twenty-two, I believe it was. Um, I did an inspection for him in twenty twenty-three, I believe. Um, kind of looked at the tank when he was just talking about washing it and. After getting a close look at it back then, I told him, we absolutely can wash it, but. When we're done and you see it, it's gonna look horrible because there's, if you get up close and look out, there's a lot of paint clearing out that, yeah, we would take. A substantial amount off by washing it. Uh, but I'll get into a little bit of that in a minute. You can go ahead and. Go forward. Um, just a quick agenda. Uh, I'll keep this as shorter as long as you want. But and like, you know, definitely gonna get feedback from you guys as we go. Gonna just run over the quick company overview of who we are. Uh, we'll talk about your water tower specifically, and then again, the maintenance program uh that we're gonna propose. So we are a dedicated water paint maintenance company. Our Viking Industrial Painting, it makes it sound like we're just paint contractors. All we do is water towers. We do maintenance, welling repair. Uh, last year, we used over a hundred thousand gallons of paint. We painted over three hundred and sixty water towers, and we'll do a lot more than that this year. Um, operated in thirty-nine states last year, uh, through some acquisitions we've made recently. I think we'll be in. Every state. I believe, including. The ones that are attached to the country. But. Um, yeah, we have in-house crews. Uh, we're about sixty forty for in-house and uh sub crews. When it comes to these maintenance programs, um. That's the most important part of our company, so we try to use as much in-house crews as we can on on these maintenance programs versus. Another side of our company does a lot of bid work and bid work is, you know. Lowest bid gets the job and and that's what you get. So, um, we try to. Focus on using the in-house crew on this stuff. Go ahead. Some of the services we offer. That's a long list. It's anything related to your water tower. Even some of the below-ground stuff, we'll take care of, uh, you know, we can replace pipes that go down into the ground. We can do valves and things like that. We have. Uh, the ability to get involved with foundation things if we need to, but that's not very common on a water tower behalf situation. Um, but anything related to your tank, whether we gotta put a new a new roof on it, new fill pipes, uh. Major overhauls of it, uh, we can do all of that stuff. E F D engineering, uh, we're licensed in several states as a uh. An engineer, so if it's ever important to you that a recommendation that I make for your water tank. You want to have somebody take an additional look. I know you've got Dave is very good with this stuff. He'd probably be glad to take a look, but we also have the ability to. Put a stand-by on it. We're not gonna charge you guys for that, but uh. It's actually a totally separate branch of our companies, our engineering, and we we don't go out and seek engineering work. We just use that as a way to. Uh, supplement the work that we do and provide a more full service to units. Um, if you, anyone, if you go into a contract with us and you don't like me, those are all people as lovely that you can talk to. They're all very approachable. Um. John, John Snodgrass, uh, he's one of the owners. He's been in the water tank industry his entire career. He's worked for uh most of the major water tank companies out there in the program that we're gonna talk about today. He kind of. Was one of the pioneers in the country for doing that. That's one of the reasons he owns the company is. Most places weren't doing it right, and he wanted to do it right. Important for you. Go ahead. We own lots of companies. There's. Viking is kind of over the top of all of them, but we have Viking Industrial Painting, which is uh water towers. Um, we own a company called Newman out of Wisconsin. Um. We, they're a union company and they carry some certifications that almost no other companies carry when it comes to high-performance coatings. It allows them to get involved in some bids where. Ninety-nine percent of other paid contractors cannot bid on because they're not qualified. That's kind of what we uh focus on with Newman. Bong and painting is based in Cherokee, Iowa, but they are uh, at least in the Midwest, one of the biggest uh. Industrial painters for municipalities. They don't do water towers, but they'll do anything related to. Waste water. Uh, your water treatment plant piping, all those kinds of things. But Owen, they're out on the East Coast. They do the same thing with you, water towers. Jeff Coe is a a company we own in California. Um, and then Tank Pro is another water tower maintenance company that does these contracts, and they kind of pick up the whole southeast corner of the country. Core values, uh, I won't read through all these, but if you read just the blue letters on there, um, the common theme is. Focusing on the customer. That's what we take the most pride in. If there's ever a problem, we just. We're gonna solve it, uh, and we're gonna do it the right way, and we're gonna do it right by you guys because our reputation means a lot to us. Uh, as far as referrals and just just doing the right thing and minimizing downtime. So that's. All those things are kind of what drives us. Customer satisfaction, uh, even if the job goes terribly, we make the call. We have someone in our office that calls and. Tries to dig up any information, good or bad, about a job that we want. That's the only way we know where we can improve, and a lot of people, when they have a bad experience with something, you know. You don't tell anybody or you don't tell the company you've had a bad experience, or if you just never use it again or you never talk to them. So. We think it's important to actually find out. It's important to us. The process, uh, this is kind of what we've gone through here in Solon. It's it's been a few years, but. We we come out and do a tank assessment, which I see a lot of you guys have my original inspection report from a few years ago. Um, that kind of provides us a baseline to build a maintenance program and a scope of work, and then ultimately a cost. Review and consultation. I did a lot of that with Scott originally. Um, and then with the transition over with him leaving, uh, we kind of picked up where we left off, and I got I got Candy and. They up to speed on that, on what the options are for taking care of your tank. If we're very flexible, it's just a matter of finding something that. You guys would like and would work for you. And then build a builder plan. That's that's where we are at right now. So getting into your tank specifically. I just. Put a few pictures on here just for something to look at. Um, you've got a lot more detail in there, and I have. A couple hundred pictures of your tank in my system because I've been up and down that thing many times since. I climbed up there and took down an antenna through a windstorm, I think, last year, a big tall antenna that looked like it was about to come down, and then. You know, working with Dave to uh come up with a plan for a new antenna, looking possibly look up there. Um, but your exterior coatings, um, that little gizmo on the upper right-hand side, that's how we measure the thickness of the coating. We take a whole bunch of readings over the tank. But we don't like to see as numbers that are approaching thirty or above thirty. That's uh mils, thousandths of an inch. When you get up that bit, uh, any paint you put over the top is gonna fail. Much faster than previous coat because you're putting a lot of stress on some paint that's pretty old. If you think about it. Each coat that goes on goes on at three or four mils or something. So if you have twenty or thirty mils on there, you've got. Six, eight, eight jobs on there, and that paint is decades old by then. So yours isn't too bad. It could be overcoated, but that picture on the left-hand side obviously looks a lot cleaner than it does today. That one was from twenty twenty-three. If you're to go out and hold up a picture like that and stand under the tank right now, it's significantly worse. The peeling on the belly, uh, I would say the moisture and the blackness that's up there has probably accelerated some of that failure. But it doesn't cause failure. It's just once there is some failure in the coatings, the moisture certainly doesn't help it at all. So. Uh, it's gone a long time. So I think the smartest thing to do would be to blast off all the coatings, don't prepare steel. It's not the only option. We can overcoat a tank like yours, but the problem is. It's less predictable how long it's gonna last. Um, eventually, you are gonna have to blast it. I wouldn't want to be in a position where we paint your tank and then in. Four years or something, you have some more of that peeling coming through on the belly, and we have to take it out of service again and go up there and and paint it again and just cross our fingers that it's gonna. Stick everywhere and not just start peeling a foot over for. Your type of water tower is called a a single pad sphere. It's basically broken up into three areas. The exterior of the tank, there's the interior dry, and then the interior wet. Interior dry is just where you access, uh, to get up on the roof. All of your piping is in there. Uh, for Solon, there's tons and tons of wires to go up to all the antennas that are out there. The dry just gives us access to accomplish all that. It's it's a. Most of it is not a very harsh environment until you get up to close to the belly of the tank, about a hundred feet up. Up there for eight, ten months out of the year, it's a damn sweaty environment because you've got that cold water always going into the tank. And it's just condensing up there. So the way we normally treat the interior dry area is just as needed. We find a spot that's bad when we're doing uh any kind of service on the tank. We come in and. Spot prep and spot coat those areas. If it starts to get really bad. We will blast the interior dry of the tank, usually just uh certain spots we'll try and do. It's a major job on this one because to blast in there, we have to ask everybody that has an antenna out there to take their stuff down. And that's a, that's a huge job. With. A maintenance program, that's something we need to set to go because those, whoever has antennas up there, you probably have multiple contracts with people. Um, that's something that we can get involved in and in. Work with them and. Strong arm as needed to. Try and get them to cooperate because your priorities aren't always their priority when it comes to this kind of thing. Uh, but yeah, the interior dry, there's some areas uh that we want to touch on, but again, just kind of has me. The next one. The wet area, that's where the water is stored. That's finished water. The wet area, that's where the water is stored. That's finished water. Um. You can see, uh, the picture on the left is the neck, um, where you enter that interior wet area. There's quite a bit of corrosion there. That's not a huge deal. That's something that as we blasted, it would come off. Um, there's a potential when you start blasting steel that looks like that was a super compacted rust down there that. There isn't actually any steel there. It's all just rust. It's all repairable, um, but you don't know until you start prepping it. Um. Those pictures of the inside are from a couple weeks ago or maybe a month ago or something like that that I was up there. I did compare them to pictures from a couple of years ago and there's probably been more corrosion up there now than there was then. Um. So it's it's progressing. What we a lot of times see those uh roof trusses are just stitch welded on, so they they weld about an inch, then they skip a couple inches, weld an inch. Um, those are usually the first things to go. It's not uncommon to see those laying in the bottom of a tank or something because those welds. Uh, just break away. Um, so you're kind of seeing some corrosion along those welds. Along all the seams and then it's very common up on the top. There's a. A big circular piece of steel that all the plates match up to, and there's a lap right there. What you can see is the corrosion from that lap in there. Um. That is one of the first places to go and. When we do do the interior of the tank, that's something we would do a little bit differently. We'd seal that up good so that you don't have an open space. It's just. Uh, seams, joints, angles, that's the first thing to fail and any any steel protection environment is the the paint when you put it on, it just kind of straights away from those edges. Uh, so, uh, you, if if when you look at the water, um. You can see some orange just above the water. That's on the surface of the coating. That's not. Corrosion, um, that's just staining from the water on it. It's not causing any harm whatsoever and there's not much you guys can do about that. Uh, but it's there. I do see some corrosion in the in the middle picture on the top, uh, at the. Right at the high water line. Well, there are a couple pieces sized spots. But there are things we can keep an eye on over the next couple of years until we can blast off the interior coatings. When it comes to doing the interior, every time it gets rehabilitated, it has to be blasted to bear steel it. Um, there are companies out there that will overcoat the interior, but it's a horrible idea, um, and it's very, very temporary. So we blast on bare steel every time and start pushing. Uh, repairs, there's not much. Um, on the left hand side, you can see looking down. Um, that tube on the bottom right corner of that picture is the tube that we climbed through to get up to the roof to then get into the wet area. Uh. There's no ladder there. Uh, I would recommend and I have included to put the ladder in there. Um, from the top of that. Tank up on the roof and through the down to the belly of the tank is. You know, thirty-five, forty feet, something like that. And when you don't have a ladder, we have to drop a rope ladder in there. And if you've ever climbed a rope ladder and you just. Every muscle in your body that can't even know you had and. This kind of present presents a little safety issue. So. I always like to put them in, makes it easier for the crew. It's it's always hot and steamy in there where they're working and just anything to make. Their job easier and safer. Then, uh, just the door latch up on the top. There's a little door that's about. Three, four feet tall to get out on through the roof. Right now it's held shut with a bungee cord just because the mechanism isn't functioning properly. Um. It's held, but a stiff wind or something like that, or just the bungee cord deteriorating could open up that door. And I have been in some tanks where uh turkey buzzards and uh. Large birds of prey have made a great mess in there. So we always like to make sure we can keep that seal up as as much as possible. This one must be animated.
Let's keep pushing.
Okay, yeah, we push till it stops. Um, this. Is over complicated way of just exposing what we're doing compared to, I talked about the bid process earlier. There when you, you know, traditionally put a tank out to bid, uh, you've got an engineer involved, you've got a paint supplier, you've got a contractor. Sometimes the welding is awarded to a separate contractor. You got all these different players coming together. To do a job, there can be a lot of finger pointing, a lot of blame game going on if something goes wrong. Ultimately, you get the lowest bid and you get a one year warranty with it. What we're doing is eliminating. Anyone in the middle. And we're taking full responsibility for the tank and the work that we do on it, whether it's a a leak that just happens. Uh, that's our problem, not yours. It's included in the maintenance program. Um, say we come out and paint it next year and in two years all of this falling off on the ground. Uh, it's our job to do it again. On our dime, not yours. Uh, it's a perpetual unlimited warranty. I don't like using that word because it sounds like a. Sale pitch, but uh. It's as long as you're in the contract, it's our problem. They told me I said, but we own all the responsibility for taking care of it and making sure that it's in condition. So. I can barely read this, but I'll just go through. Um. Maintenance program, like I said, it's us taking responsibility for all the care and maintenance and upkeep of the tank. Um, it. No matter who's got, you know, Dave's job or anyone in this room, the one thing that's constant is us, we. Uh, when you sign a contract, we start building out many years into the future what the plan looks like that they. Uh, twenty thirty-two, we're going to do a drain down cleanup on their tank and we're going to contact you and say, all right, here's what's going on this year. Let's figure out a time that works for you to do it. Um. We inspect it much like I did with that inspection report at a bare minimum every single year. You get an inspection report, um, like that one. We identify any deficiencies and we put together a plan to fix them. And that also helps us determine the the paint cycle for the various areas of the tank and will, uh. Build out when we're going to paint it next based on those inspection results, but. Um, ultimately, it's our responsibility and uh. We have a plan. Go to the next one. Um, these agreements are, uh. Initially, there is a multi-year agreement because we're. We're splitting up the costs. We'll see in one of the next slides. I think you guys have already seen the numbers, but we're splitting up the costs. In a several years of a a large, much larger investment to just make it easier to swallow. Um. But much after that initial spread is done, uh, you're on a year by year basis. If you want to cancel things. You don't like us, you don't like the program, whatever it is, uh, ninety day written notice is all it takes to cancel. We can never cancel you as a customer. Um. You know, let's say for whatever reason, your tank just starts to cost us a lot of money. We can't seem to keep paint on it, uh, that's that's leaking every year for one reason or another. Um, we can't come to you and say, uh. We don't want to do this anymore. Have a nice day. Um, and there's also a clause about escalation in there. You. Do get too expensive for us, we can't come back to you and ask for more money. Uh. We're assuming that risk upfront based on our observations. Um. So the max escalation is five percent annually. We do it in three year chunks, so you're always going to know exactly what it's going to be for three years, but then to build the next. Three year chunk, we'll see what it's been over the past three years and come up with a number that averages those. So go to the next one. So I helped even it out a little bit and I think it's a little more fair that way than doing it every single year because. You're going to. Times like right now, you're going to take a lot more of an increase than you may need to over a a long period of time. So escalation capped at five percent. Um, payments were super flexible. Uh, we can do quarterly, annually, semi-annually. Um, in payload, they do. I'm pretty sure they do monthly with us right now because they just would rather write a whole bunch of small checks than one big check. So. It's it's totally up to you guys, whatever you prefer to do. We're flexible. Uh. You have any questions about the maintenance program? So this is what it looks like. Um. For the next five years. You're at uh about seventy-nine, I think it was, seventy-nine eight. Um. We would plan to do the tank next year. Um. And when I say that, I mean, all the repairs to be discussed and then taking care of the exterior. Next year would be a full blast and being here in uh. Right in town here with the bank and everything right there, it has to be a full containment job. So we're we're going to. Put up the huge tent around it to contain all the dust. And try and minimize the impact locally. It's going to be super noisy, but uh the blasting doesn't last all that long. It'll be a couple days of. Maybe not right from the sound, but um big containment to keep it clean. Um, and then paint it. The way I figured it is to paint it how it is right now, same logo, same color scheme. That's something that if you change your mind on that, we can talk about that. We can do anything you want to, um. And make adjustments there. It's just if you get too elaborate, there might be a little bit of a change order there. But, um, yeah, we would look at paint it next year. Um. If you want to do it early in the year, we could do it earlier in the year. Um. The other thing that sometimes happens, and this will be up to you guys too, but if you were to tell me you'd be interested in doing it this year if we had time, uh. We. I'd kind of put you what I say on call where. We got a shuffle jobs. Our schedule changes daily and we got a shuffle jobs all around all the time. And somebody that has a job like this might say, we want to put ours to next year. When we got a new opening in our schedule for a job, so we could call you and say. If you're ready, we can be here and get started. So that would be kind of up to you guys. If you'd be interested in that, otherwise our plan would be to put it on the schedule. Uh, as soon as it's warm enough to get started in the spring. Um, and then going out to, uh. Forward the end is where we do the interior because there is a little bit of life in there. Um, I I don't like to. Blast off interior coatings any sooner than you have to because when you blast steel like that. You're you're taking off steel. Um, you paid for that lying in there. It's serving a purpose right now and it's doing a pretty good job of it. So I like to just. In the spirit of maximizing the life of the coatings and minimizing the overall cost of ownership, we like to. Uh, get what we can out of it. So we do the interior at the end unless the changes dramatically between now and then. And then you can see in the final year, that's what the fees look like moving forward. That includes. All future paint jobs inside and out, all your touch ups, uh. Somebody gets drunk, shoots a hole in the tank, uh, we can fix it. Uh. The the only real explosions are, um. That. If we ever had to blast it again with a that tent thing that I talked about, we don't include that in there because it's a huge expense and. Only in this room is going to be alive when we have to do that again. Uh, we'd be able to overcoat it six, eight times before we ever have to blast it again. We're talking a hundred years to the future with today's paint technologies. Um. Uh, and then the only thing that's excluded is the riser pipe. That's what feeds the tank. It's it's insulated. Um, it's impossible to inspect it. If I look at a riser pipe that's. Two, three years old on the inside, it's going to look almost the same as one that's forty years old. It's sounding rusty and, uh. Kind of nasty looking inside there. That's just the way they are. Um. They're they're kind of thing you just wait for them to break. Uh. A lot of them last. I mean, we replaced one last year that was almost ninety years old. Some some of them. Don't last quite that long. Some of the tanks were built in the early two thousands. We're using pretty crappy steel and we replaced some of them, but. Otherwise, it's a on average a forty to sixty year asset. So there's no reason to charge you for any of that now when it just. Might not ever happen to that thing. So. If you have a problem with the riser pipe, we do take care of the insulation as part of our maintenance program. But the actual pipe itself, um, is is a separate. So it would be a. Reliable.
You have an estimated cost on a riser pipe, just.
I do.
Just out of curiosity.
It's a, it's pretty expensive. Um. Now with you having a maintenance program, it would probably be a little cheaper than if you just called me up and said, we need a riser pipe, but it's about a, in today's money. It's about a hundred and twenty thousand dollars. But. You know, to warrant a full replacement versus a repair is. You know, we got one in Oakland, Iowa, that they actually. They have the same program and I won't do this whole same thing with them and they called me the next day with the leaking, but I did try to. But, um, theirs was. One of those cases of bad steel. We got the insulation off and there was ten leaks in it, so we decided let's replace the whole thing, but. If there's one spot that leaks, we can match a pipe and then see how it goes for a while versus just. Jumping into that.
Rob, you mentioned there were quite a few coats of paint on there. Do you know is the primer that's underneath of all that? Is that chromium or lead base?
Probably chromium, um. I think, if I remember correctly, the tank was built in eighty-one or something like that. Um, so. I believe it's red. That usually means lead. They couldn't use lead after nineteen seventy-eight, but who's to say there wasn't steel in a stockpile in the yard somewhere that they shipped out for this one? So. I think it's it's almost certainly chromium, um, but I don't I don't think there's, uh. Both of it, well, we're we're going to test it.
So the uh the price that's there, that includes it now all down to burn metal and distilling of that material and then playing up. I think then mud valves, the gasket seals, the uh stream. And vents, all that stuff.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, we take responsibility for the benefits of all this stuff. Anything being our related, we we keep that. Until. Speed for you.
I didn't look at it real closely, but the uh climbing safety flying stuff in there, is that all to be replaced? Is that in that?
Trying to remember what we got next for that. I think. Think we, uh, if we look here. If it needed it, I definitely included it, but I don't remember if that was even. I don't think it will.
You climbed it.
I felt safe, yeah.
Then the other thing that comes up on those, I don't know if that that one has an aviation life, but those tend to burn out. It gets commodity so often, uh.
Yeah, we can. So that is kind of a separate deal, just more like an antenna. Um, yeah, we can replace bulbs in there and we we do that for a lot of them. A lot of people, if they say, let's just bring bulbs up there and put new ones in with our next. Inspection. Um, one thing you could do that I've been doing quite a bit of, they're not super expensive. I think they're under two thousand dollars, but. They make these uh magnetic solar powered LED lights. And uh super strong magnets, um. Like rare earth magnets. But, uh, you can just put that up there and, uh, they got a whole bunch of little LEDs. So instead of just. Working or not working, those little LEDs start burning out over time. So they have like a twelve year life on them.
The requirement is to have the light as the highest point for all those antennas up there. I don't know if that puts that right.
Now, we have to put that on for like it's a little bit more expensive, but yeah, on a four world tank, you just put it right on.
Times have more of a change too.
Yeah. Yeah, because some of those antennas are. Ten feet above the highest standard part of the tank up there. Um, no, interior wet ladder, C complex, the roof seam. Gaskets, all that stuff, prepare the, yeah, the safety climate must be good because I.
John, I I mean, Rob, I have a question on the, so after, when we get to twenty thirty.
Yep.
It's going to stay in that fifteen five range.
It's going to stay.
Forward?
That's quoted and it's in the contract. So for three years, it'll be at fifteen five. After three years, we'll reassess. The the escalation and it'll be sixteen something over there.
Another question I had is I think everybody is would love to see something happen this year. Yeah. Um, just because it it is looking pretty, pretty rough. I just don't know the lead time it would take for us to switch gears, empty that. Tower and, you know, be in a position. Um, what kind of lead time day over day does that take?
It can happen pretty fast. We can switch everything over to those ground stones and. It could be up the operating. I just want to touch base with, uh. Engineered solutions or whatever it was and make sure we're we're doing that right over there. Yeah, we can run everything out of ground for it.
Yeah, I'm curious. Really, I don't know how quickly.
Yeah, that that could happen in.
So, yeah, that's something I can tell our operations people is to put you guys on the list of, uh. Some calls through call and we'll do it, you know, it's going to take. It's a. On the short side. A month. On the long side, it's it's totally weather dependent and. Getting out into the fall when the days are a little bit shorter and the temperatures are a little bit cooler, your your working window gets a little smaller every day. But, uh, there's still a lot of. There's still a lot of gear left.
If if there's no more questions for Rob, I'm going to just run through the financial side of things quickly with the council. Um, so. As we've talked about. Every budget year, we. As we've talked about, every budget year, we've been putting money away for, we know this major rehab of the tower was coming. And so um. We currently receive um a a water levy. It's a a levy that we get sixty-seven and a half cents. Um, for one thousand dollars evaluation and it's directly for water improvements. We've used it for past water tower repairs. We've used it for the meter or tape placement program. And so currently, um, the fund has uh. About three hundred thousand dollars in it, and then we get about a hundred and sixteen thousand dollars annually. So again. You know, trying to get us in a position to handle these large repairs. This. Program lets us um kind of get away from that save, 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 pay for it. And la- actually, the last time we had to do a major repair, we had to take out a bond to do it. Uh, so that's how um, that's that's why I like this program. Because it lets us get out of that and we don't have to have the tower get into the condition it is, because we're constantly um staying ahead of it. So that hundred and sixteen thousand that's coming in, that's directly earmarked for water tower uh maintenance. Um, will help cover this cost plus the money that we've already saved. We could hold on to and continue to be in a good position if we had the riser pipe break or some unexpected repairs. Uh, so from a budgeting standpoint, I really like it from a. From a a standpoint of just knowing that the tower's staying in good condition, I think it makes really good sense to to. At least give this a try, especially if if it's a contract we can get out of. Um, and again, I just believe there's a a. This is a company with a good reputation. So if we're gonna take a chance on a program like this, this would be a company that I can really support.
Questions, comments?
No, I I don't know. I like that the. What what came in to say about knowing where we're going to be at as far as. You know, we first started talking about. Uh, redoing the water tower a couple of years ago. It's like we did, you know, where where do we even start? Kind of was the conversation and. You know, Scott kind of got their ball going with them to think and uh. Didn't kind of didn't know what was gonna happen. And now is it's. Got a couple of years further. It's nice to know we we can budget it out for it. We have some funds that we'll be able to use for it.
The utility committee felt largely the same for all these reasons.
Uh, with the all the work stats, here any additional comments or thoughts or anything on this involved?
My my thinking is uh. The tower looks pretty bad right now, and that's kind of, once we, once we decided to put the Spartan head up there. Kind of took a pride in town. Um, and our. You know, soul in general, it's kind of our beacon. As you're coming into town, I'd like to see it. Uh, look better and stay looking better. So.
Any concerns from the the maintenance side of it, or do you guys feel like it's?
No, I think it's a great idea. Um. Affordable. Um, yeah. And in-house, we don't do a lot of maintenance on it, because. We don't have the equipment, so. Somebody, we're gonna have to pay somebody to do what they do. Might as well. I think it's a great idea.
Thanks. Well, I I definitely agree as well, and I I like the predictability from a budgeting standpoint. With that, where it's. We don't have to just save up to have a major expense and then. Drain the piggy bank more or less, so that it's uh like it can be well planned for. So, Rob, thanks so much for coming in and talking through that.
Yeah.
Um, with this tonight and sharing that presentation and guess uh with that. Uh, do we have a a motion on for the water tower maintenance?
I'll move to approve the water tower maintenance program.
Harley?
Yes.
Green?
Yes.
Whitehead?
Yes.
Alright, thanks so much.
Yep. Well, I've got the contracts with me. You guys, if you want to sign them and send them to me, I can give the operations or if you want to sign them now. One last thing for that antenna. Um. Uh, we were gonna put an antenna out there for for a year.
Yeah.
Okay, so I got a proposal here for that. Uh, it's forty-five hundred dollars. Um, you guys are supplying the antenna, the coaxial cable. And anything associated with that, well, we, then also the mask that we put on, we're gonna put on a ten foot mask up on the top. And then I would provide. Uh, all the hardware for clamping the cable on the way up, uh, securing the cable up for top. And then also for clamping the mast, turning the existing antenna structures that are out there, and that's forty-five hundred.
Slight. And so the the read, the meter reading that it's gonna be able to read the whole town. So when Neptune came to us, they built in. Their costs to set that whole, but they encouraged us to see if somebody local, because their price is a lot more. And that's why they encouraged us. So again, Rob was able to come and uh that's one of another reasons he was on the towers to see. So we appreciate that. Sounds like a a bid that's gonna. Work well with our project. Um, that doesn't necessarily need council approval, because they've already approved the project. But thank you. Um, as far as the contracts, if you would leave those with me, I'll get them signed and get them back to you tomorrow.
That's the, that's what we talked about with like ninety-eight percent of the town that it would cover.
Yeah.
Yeah.
All of them. Thank you.
Uh, makes sense. Thank you.
Alright, that takes us to item sixteen, temporary site plan variance.
Yeah, so um. Tom Altman is the owner of the property that is um a rubber duck, rubber rubber ducky car wash. And the what we all know as the consignment area, that is actually one lot. Um, there's been some uh like mini excavators, something moved in here in the last few weeks. I reached out to Tom. And just kind of inquiry with some inquiries about kind of what the plan was. I shared with Tom and Colleen a few years ago when the consignment left, that the consignment was there on a. Carryover temporary variance from two thousand eight that was granted to allow some um. Some rental consignment activity, but with that. With that business leaving, that temporary waiver also left. So that site plan would need to be submitted. Um, also, the building brought up to code. Um, so those types of things. So Tom's here tonight to. Ask the council to consider a temporary waiver of the site plan regulations. Um. I'm not sure. We haven't really talked about how temporary. Um, I know the property was for sale, so I imagine pretty temporary. Um, just wanted to um. Uh, let the council know that uh really since that two thousand eight temporary site plan variance, we have not had any other. Precedence for such a thing. I wanted, before Tom explains what he'd like to do, I'd like Dave to give just a brief. Explanation of what you would potentially be waiving, if that makes sense.
So typically, when we have a uh property that has a change in use, we request a site plan so that we can see what's going to be proposed for that area. That identifies where it is on the property. And you can see from the picture here, there's a good portion of that part behind it off the property. Uh, that's one of the things that we look at. Uh, we need to figure out how it's going to affect that as far as uh equipment going in and out of that barge you put going in and out. If that is appropriate for the accesses that are there. Um, if they're going to have any sort of a um business. Facility in there that would require water or sewer, you know, if they're going to have an office in there, for example, how is that set up? Is that a existing building adequate for that? Uh, just a number of things that we go through when we look at the site plan. And we don't know for sure what's proposed, if we just extend the uh the conditional use or the uh. The waiver on this, uh, and then there's also really no control on it. So. If we wanted to set any conditions, we don't have the ability to do that unless we know what we're getting and what we want those conditions to be. Uh, so just a number of things that that we generally look for on that, um, that that we uh. Generally don't have control over if we don't have all the information to make those decisions. So, you know, the expiration date on this could be something we'd want to take a look at. Um, but you're off home and it's a good part on here. You have DOT has to have another um. Variance or a a way virtual allow them to to have certain equipment out there. You know, things that we we visited with the previous one that uh that we'd want to take a look at. So. If if you waive it, uh, we don't have a lot of information unless you're requested as part of the uh. The inception that you're going to grant. Um, so. It's it's difficult for us to handle the maintaining recommendation or give counseling guidance without having the information that go on.
Tom will hand over to you to talk through.
Yeah, I think Cammy explained it well. I think one is quite. So, uh, according on the property, we do rent that to the car wash. I self-regret first to run the car wash. So that other portion is unrented at this point in time. So other than that, I can, any questions that you have there?
I guess one, as if you're, as you're looking for a temporary site plan variance on like, how temporary are?
Yeah, I mean, it opens the suggestions there. I'd like to see maybe nine to twelve months for right now. Just trying to understand a little bit of what of what's going on there. The property is technically not for sale anymore. We 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 had it up for sale and uh so now it's, that's expired. Just a little, just expired stuff, you know, they.
Are you relisting it or is it?
Not planning to.
Not planning to, okay. Andrew Lauren, do you have any, any questions on it? And and it's gonna be mostly many excavator, many holes.
Sorry, I guess explain that more. So, yeah, the building is definitely not inspect, it's not being inspected, it would have started a long mark at one point in time. It's really just a display product. Brent Mears is using that to set them there. He's selling those online, so there's no. Retail sales happening at the location. Um, so it's really a display, depending on the excavators, little small equipment online. Um, so there's not, um. It's really not an office, so business transactions have. More of a display.
So most of the traffic that's gonna be there would be people stopping to. Maybe checking out to to give him a call on or something like that.
I would think so.
Okay.
Being around the car washes, I haven't really, I haven't actually seen anyone there yet.
Okay.
So I I think a lot of it is people though, either pretty common sold around if you've seen around. So I I assume that what will happen is more, oh, I see that. Auto on the website, a Brent's website where they're displayed. So, but uh, yeah.
Like one thing, looking at the a variance from nine to twelve months, I would have some concerns with that. I was under the assumption that the. The varying request was just for what you have out there.
Yeah.
Um, I would definitely want to. With how it's set up right now, assuming it's on the lot line, the setbacks. I would be open to granting that until those are out of there, assuming it's short term. I think a lot of times Brent's auctions don't go. Real long. It's a a matter of weeks with that, but I would not want anything else to come in outside of that without a. A site plan. It's, I feel like this came to us as a ask for forgiveness rather than permission. And that's not something, that's not how we like to go about our ways with this. Granted, given how it's set up right now. Assuming it's on the lot, if it were there for a few weeks. I would entertain the idea, but nine to twelve months I would not be interested in. I don't know about thoughts from anybody else.
I agree, Dan.
Yeah, I thi- I think uh. I I think a short, a shorter term would be, would be more. The way, the way that I would want to approach this, um, just with the way. The city's growing and and with uh granting variances, we we just need to be very cautious on on that type of thing.
Andrew, any thoughts? I guess one of the things that I would, I would want to know before approving anything is how long they'll be sitting there with that. I would want to have it be very clear that this is not a practice. We want. Moving forward, this is not a, we're just gonna set it up and hope nobody says anything type thing, that we have. Procedures and policies that we need to follow. This would be going outside of that. And if it's a matter of a couple of weeks, I think that's something that we we talked about, but. As far as next steps, I don't know if Cammy or Kevin, you have.
Well, if you, if you want to, I I don't know what timeframe, you could probably approve a mask, Cammy. Prove it for this use that's there now and then that something else goes in there, you know, put a time limit on this use and then if something else goes in there, he had to come back before. You know, beforehand, I don't know.
Right, and so uh an expiration date, I think, is very important. Um, and just make it clear that the equipments that that is there, you know, nothing. No new, once this is gone, no new equipment comes in. The other thing. That I think we need to be clear, what is, what equipment could be there, because the mini excavators and the um. The the um, the storage trailers, they're a violation as well. Um, unless they're there on a temporary basis, so which it sounds like they are. So just need to be really clear on. How long the council would would want them, will allow them and what equipment will be allowed and what activity will be allowed, because again. It doesn't have hard surface. It doesn't have parking spaces. It doesn't have all of those um. Typical requirements for operating a business. Um, so, but it is a unique situation as well, so. I can appreciate the council's flexibility, as long as there's some real set criteria, so we're not setting limits.
I think that's that's. Some of the things that you talked on with that is that there aren't active sales going on. It's not an act, it is strictly a display, and so that's why I would be supportive of it. Given a a short timeframe and knowing that this isn't a common practice that we want to be doing and that. A longer term exception or variance is not something I would be supportive of. So I guess. Or there is an approval. Or discussion on on an approval, I guess, timeframe, that would be very important in that. Do you know how long Brent's auction is?
I don't know the exact details, but I know he's planning on selling it soon. I mean, I don't think it's. Ninety days at the very max, I would think, probably less.
Sitting there at at ninety, I feel like that's even excessive. My thoughts, I don't know.
Yeah, and I, I mean, less, I'm just doing that. If I said twenty-nine days and it's thirty-five days, I'd be hurt, you know. Overestimating.
I always suggest that the council has to put an end date on it. It's on or before. It's at the end, it's the absolute end, and if the stuff leaves, then it's over before that. So that you don't.
Have other things come in during that timeframe.
So. What's there now? Is there now? If that leaves, then it's done, or you guys click a drop dead date, say you're done now?
Yeah, I feel like if we were to go, we got a thirty days of a middle of September, October one, something where it's. This, once it's over, it's done, nothing else can be added to it, or it's. Without this, a site line, without going through the process. I don't know, so it's certainly where you put your.
So okay, let's, let's just say you said October first and with the stipulation that if they, if. They leave room in that and move by its own. There are no, there are no sales on site. It's just a display area, where it isn't anything.
And then just be clear on what equipment is allowed. Uh, you know, everything.
We're not gonna be adding things after.
Right.
What's there is there. We're not gonna add stuff to this. This this is just the temporary for for what's there.
And then what's there is leaving.
Yeah.
After whatever date.
Either on or before, whatever date. I just threw October first in. So. First of all.
Yeah.
That's, I mean, that's.
I mean, just, I, I mean, everything that uh that Kevin said, maybe uh to October thirty-first, because we're not adding. I just.
That comes up for you guys. I that.
Yeah.
I was just throwing a date out there.
I know how. That five weeks now, you know, I'm quite compared to, so. I mean, all the situations. Yeah, in October. I I just feel like the longer we let it go on, the more this opens up the doors for others with it.
What's the date that we're debating? Can I?
I just threw the date out there, Lauren. It it's up to the.
Oh, okay.
I just threw that, I just threw October first out because just as a date, I didn't, there was no.
I understand. I don't, I don't have a problem with. Ninety days or less, I would definitely not want it to go longer than ninety days. That's how I feel.
It's enough to wear, so. To be stuck there and have it sitting there on water.
Well, it had to be out, by the way.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, it. This is speculation, but if you guys have front ears, nothing sticks around in here. I said, I, I.
I I I I could do I could do October thirty-first because, you know, that's gets us before winter.
Assumption, Brent will probably have a moving.
I mean, I mean.
Okay, so I just wanna summarize and if I miss anything. Is the temporary uh permit is from two until October thirty-first. Honor before October thirty-first, if the stuff moves beforehand, then it automatically ends. There will be no direct sales on the site. Uh and no other equipment that's already that is not there at this time will be brought into the brought into the site.
All equipment currently on the site removed.
Yeah, removed by that by that.
Equipment and the storage.
Yeah, storage, whatever, yeah, behind them.
I think with that, so with those things, uh assuming if. That were to be approved, just again, what you wanna make very clear, I think this would be a a one-time. Variance on it that we would expect the site planning process to go through, Kevin.
Yeah. Do you wanna include anything that they don't have to move after, or they're versatile or?
Oh, I'd say I it'd be a it'd be a citation if they didn't have it removed, because they because they wouldn't have. Because they wouldn't have an actual per valid permit at that time. So that would be the, and I don't think that's gonna happen, but that if if it wasn't removed, I I would follow this, we use those citations. So.
Tom, questions or or concerns than you have?
Um not really, uh maybe just who I can talk to, I don't know, it's just. From what I can tell, this doesn't fall under, what we're doing, it doesn't fall for anything, we totalize it, it falls in between the two things, so.
Thanks, uh with that, do we have a motion uh for the temporary site plan variance request?
I'll move for the temporary uh approval of the temporary request uh with the. Conditions stated previously and ending on October thirty-first.
Yes.
Kramer?
Yes.
Wyatt?
Yes.
That takes us to item seventeen, the boundary line adjustment uh for seven thirteen Cedar Ben Drive.
I was just seeing these folks. Um so um we, I received a request for a boundary line adjustment for seven thirteen Cedar Ben. This is a new home and the new owners would like to create a flat area in their very sloped backyard. Um and approach the developer about the idea of um. Uh a boundary line adjustment uh to make, create some flat areas. Um so what you're seeing is a rear yard boundary line adjustment. Uh however, this does go directly up to the trail and the pond in um. In the Bride Estates, that pond, once the development is done, will go to the homeowners association. Um and there is, they did review this, there are some concerns about the overflow uh. Of of the of the pond uh being protected, and so I think other than that concern. Dave um generally, I think, is in favor of it, but the pond that was potentially starting to be blocked.
What happens is when the water rises high enough that it goes over the overflow and also spreads out in that area that it spreads out in. There are lots adjacent to this lot that have a full water storage easement, and that's what that intent is. They're changing their lot lines, and their lot line by doing this could move over into that area that should have that even on it. But since it's part of the outlaw currently, it didn't need the easement. So we wanna make sure of two things, one, that it doesn't interfere with the maintenance ability of the trail. Two, that if the water would rise to a certain level, it doesn't form this parcel without an easement, so they'll have to evaluate both of those. And give us uh a report back that water at the overflow elevation. Would not encroach onto this parcel and second, that it would not impede the ability to maintain the trail. So if they can do both of those and input that on this plan of survey, if it impacts it in in my. Uh then we would be good with that, but I think we can approve it uh conditional on them providing the information we need to make that determination.
So they're wanting to put. A wall. They're wanting to put a wall at the edge of this where the where the this extra parcel is, they want to put a wall out there so they can make the.
They haven't provided anything on on their design, they're just asking for the additional property. Now, if they're wanting to put a retaining wall that's over four feet, now they, you know, that's where they have to have a setback. Um they have to meet this, as though they couldn't put it right on the property line.
So this is to get the property, the next step they would have to submit if they wanted to build something there, and that building permit would be reviewed with me, and we could kind of like that determination at that point. We don't have that information yet.
So we're just, so we're, the only thing that we're doing right now is saying if we're. Willing to have that small piece become part of that.
Part of their lot versus right now, it's um. It's part of the outlaw, which is currently owned by the developer.
Has the developer commented on question, right?
The developer submitted this on behalf of, and they did indicate their support, however. Um yeah, it is currently owned by the, it hasn't been turned over to the homeowners association yet.
Anyone would think that you wouldn't do the transaction if you didn't get your building permit or your site plan approved? Well. I'm I'm not saying that wouldn't happen, but no, no, I just. I I think there isn't there, I'm sorry, I was just looking up the. Around a lot of those outlots, a lot of those lots have small outlots around them.
They did, but not on this side, I think they're on that, is it on that corner?
South side, the west corner.
Yeah, it's up on that corner, something similar that they did. Um this is kind of a. Standalone situation, so you'd have one lot that has a much bigger backyard than all the others on that side.
Does this open the door for all the other?
Good question.
Yeah, they, looks like from the map, they've they've got the most room on what that was, lots have about the most room there, some of them there.
I'll pull that up.
Some trails are.
So yeah, he's right, that's, there's very few lots that even could do this, this is probably.
Wanted to do with one of the other ones already. Yeah, this looks, it looks like the one next door probably could do it too if they wanted to. And then on the other side of the pond there, I see the outlots are on the other side of the pond there, that you were talking about, there's. Three or four houses that have an extra outlaw on the back of them.
Yeah, like Roseanne has one and, yeah.
Majestic O, that's like.
Yeah, it does, it does do that, John, it does open a door um, but there are very few who even could. It, yeah.
Yeah, it looks like the one, yeah. Mr. Watson to the seven eleven probably could make it work to if they wanted to.
Cause I think you already sold the one to six oh six, didn't you? They just have, she has, if you look at her lot, one and back. I don't know if maybe they came together or what.
She pulled the map up here so we can see it. Seven thirteen less heater bed, because it's not even showing as, that's when it's not even showing it as an outlaw.
So as you can see, um it's one of the few houses. That, see, there is, the other, the other ones just don't have any room. And it's one of the few houses that could.
So.
This one's seven thirteen.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's it right there. So it's this house right here that's highlighted, so this house could could ask for it as well. And as you look around the pond, just looking to see, there's not really too many others that have the ability. But up here, you can see there's some outlots.
Looks like if you if you look behind six oh six, yeah, not that uh over the other way. Yeah, that one. Looks like he's already sold that one, that outlaw to her, or gave, I I don't know how that, or if that went with the lot, because there are two different parcels.
Yeah.
So do we have to create a new parcel for seven thirteen, like that parcel there? For them to get that, this piece that they're asking for?
Yeah, you have to create the parcel. And then. Um. With this, does it create two separate parcels or does it move the boundary, the?
This, this is sort of a boundary line adjustment, so they're moving into the edge of this new parcel, I mean, one, one.
So it'll show as one parcel.
Okay.
If this is approved.
I'll move to approve boundary line adjustment for seven thirteen Cedar Ben Drive.
Subject to, subject to.
Subject to Dave's approval, oh yeah, definitely.
Mark, we have Portland?
Yes.
Kramer?
Yes.
Wyatt?
Yes.
Alright. Takes us to item eighteen, fiscal twenty-five audit engagement.
Um we received the audit engagement from Cronlogian Olson. This is the last year of a three-year agreement that the city had with them. The uh price, uh the cost of the uh audit, which we're required to have annually is fifteen thousand dollars. Um that is consistent with what was in the original three-year agreement, and I recommend approval of the audit engagement.
I'll move to approve FY twenty-five audit engagement.
I'll second.
Portland?
Yes.
Kramer?
Yes.
Wyatt?
Yes.
Alright, takes us to item nineteen, resolution number twenty-five thirty-four, street closure.
Well, this is for the global war on spare, this is specifically for the uh escort arrival of the wall on September eighteenth. They'd like to close the street, getting in at nine AM and expect it to be open at five PM, and that's just the Legion Block. On Market Street to Dubuque. Just to close the street off.
Sounds like there weren't any concerns from public works with logistics conversations or?
Nope.
I'll move to approve resolution twenty-five thirty-four.
Second.
Portland?
Yes.
Kramer?
Yes.
Wyatt?
Yes.
It's item twenty, Prairie Rose Lane Reconstruction Project Pay Estimate Number Two, Dave?
This is a release of retention payment, um so they have held back a certain amount uh for state code. Until it's accepted, the next step I want here is to uh accept the project as complete, so. This pay estimate will set up every release after in the thirty days, that breaks up.
Questions or concerns?
Good motion.
Motion to approve Prairie Road Lane Reconstruction Project Estimate Two.
Second.
Portland?
Yes.
Kramer?
Yes.
Wyatt?
Yes.
It's item twenty-one, Prairie Rose Lane Reconstruction Project Certification of Completion.
Accepting a project, recommend approval of this one.
Motion to approve Prairie Road Lane Reconstruction Project Certification of Completion.
Second.
Portland?
Yes.
Kramer?
Yes.
Wyatt?
Yes.
Uh item twenty-two, Curbin Gutter Project, fiscal year twenty-six, Cammy, Oregon?
So uh Streets Committee has already uh previewed this, this is for the um one block. On the uh west side of um Iowa Street, there along the substation, this is really one of our last sections on that. Port quadrant of town, um the quote from Kluznar uh combination is forty-four thousand. Uh one hundred and nineteen dollars, and this is for the curb and gutter and the overlay asphalt overlay. Um and the and the uh replacement of the sidewalk on that west side. Um we typically uh budget about a hundred and twenty thousand dollars, um so this is about a third of that. Um and the Kluznar has indicated they could go ahead and get that work done here. Um they had originally said they could do it before school, but school starts on Monday, but they will be, said they can get in here within the next few weeks. Uh we do have some other projects that we're gonna be presenting to the Streets Committee next month, but we'd like to get this one started.
Move to approve curb and gutter pro- curb and gutter project FY twenty-six.
I'll second.
Portland?
Yes.
Kramer?
Yes.
Wyatt?
Yes.
And then that uh takes other business, item twenty-three, uh council committees. Uh so the streets, which approved the current guy project on there, utilities, utility forgiveness.
Just had a request for utilities forgiveness that the uh that the committee reviewed.
Alright, uh the finance, I know you mentioned the data application. Uh earlier, the the finance committee will be getting together on that.
Still still trying to coordinate schedules, we also had some CDs that the finance committee reviewed and will be renewed uh at nine months. Um at four percent uh at those banks.
Uh personnel?
Personnel has several things in the works, I'll reach out, personnel, uh like to meet with them next month to wrap up some things that are in the loop.
Buildings and growth, we talked about downtown expansion.
Right, and Dave is uh, Dave's team is working on the survey, and once we get that done, we'll we'll switch gears and work on marketing.
Uh the police committee?
Sorry, I have that under the wrong, I have that item under the wrong, nothing for the police.
Uh twenty-eight, uh agreement with the school owner, the city and school, I saw you had an email out, uh not too long ago about that.
Yeah, just looking for feedback from that committee, keep that moving forward.
Alright, community center, the future direct center discussion.
Um also send that committee some information, so um I'm gonna be working on some um. Budget sentinels, so I just wanted every, just. Uh wanted to share the information that I'd received, um and also uh we'll let you know when we're ready to kind of reconnect.
On the engineering agreement, as Rod mentioned during his comment.
Yeah, waiting for Rod, yeah.
Takes us to item twenty-four, city clerk report. Uh city administrator.
Just wanted to let council know that as Dave mentioned, we did receive the um the. Uh site plan for the East Arby Lot at Lakeview Elementary, so that will be on the agenda for planning and zoning this month. School starts on the twenty-fifth, and just a reminder that um the global wall of terror. On terror is September eighteen through the twenty-first, and the presentation with the Black Hawk. Hawk helicopters planned for noon on that Saturday. Keep your calendars open for that, that's all.
Uh council comments?
I just wanted to say um to Liz, congratulations on an awesome summer reading program, thirty percent participation is huge.
Thank you.
Mayor Collins, again, just uh good with the the summer reading program, listen, we got some yellow t-shirts at home with with those. Uh and gracious to you and and all the guys, uh I know we, Cammy mentioned the line painting, but that extra hour, just. And you guys continue to have examples of where we feel we made the right choice of continuing to. Uh have more responsibility with the super and heavy program and everything there, so appreciate uh you and everything that the guys feel, so. Uh lastly, uh do you have a motion for adjournment?
Move to adjourn.
I'm calling favor sad.